Welcome everybody today to our September 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The first item we have on the agenda is the approval of the August 2nd minutes. Members, y'all have had those. Any changes that need to be made? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve, please.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. First item on the agenda is UR 2103 and 115211, utility review for AT&amp;T for some cell, antenna, and equipment.
Thank you. So, just a quick background, y'all have had a small cell review before. I believe Mike presented that a couple of years ago. There has been some changes in the City of Fairhope since then. We have a standalone small cell ordinance now. That has a lot of requirements that are right-of-way folks and building inspectors are going to be looking at, but in general, what it does is give staff, planning commission, and in some cases, city council, some review to ensure the aesthetics are met, you know, and it's not creating a burden when small cells inundate Fairhope and we have a lot. At this month, we have a request for one small cell. There's a pretty clear distinction on what, I want to be clear, of planning commission's role. All small cells require planning commission review. There is small cells that require a new pole, and then small cells that are co-located. So if they're co-located on existing equipment, the planning commission is the final authority. If they're new poles, they will have to, you will be recommending to the county city council approval of, or denial, or anywhere in between, similar to, you know, we don't like the wooden pole, this would be a great place for a street light, and put your, you know, those kind of details. In this particular case, there is a request of AT&amp;T to install a small cell on an existing pole at the end of Valanta Avenue. If you're familiar with the Yacht Club is down there, in the parking lot across the street, there's an existing pole there. I won't go into a whole lot of details unless you have it, but that, this image on the screen shows that site. And this, this shows the equipment, so you see the existing pole and the equipment sits on top of that. The height requirements, there is a little bit of a, you know, fudge factor of three inches, you know, we didn't really get into that. If we need to make them cut off three inches of the wooden pole, we can do that, but we really didn't beat them up too bad over that three inches, so basically, this is a simple one, we're looking at it. Then, equipment and antenna is to be brown in color to blend with the surroundings. I believe y'all did look at some of these details. I'd ask you to give staff a little leeway on that. We did go out on some of those sites and did determine, in some locations, brown is not the best, black is not the best, you know, some green, so if you give us a little leeway on that, we will ensure it blends with the surroundings as much as possible. You know, I kind of summarized these comments. If there's anything we need to look at in detail, we can, the conditions here really reflect where we want to make sure the important items are set into conditions, it's repeated in the ordinance, so we're just kind of highlighting what the process is with these conditions. I won't read it, you know, they're, it's kind of a boilerplate, and I think this is how we'll approach these things in the future. If they're new, our reviews will be a little bit more detailed and look at what other options are available. This one's pretty simple, and I think they're meeting the intent of that small cell ordinance by co-locating on existing equipment, so.
Any questions for staff at this time? Anyone here represent AT&amp;T by any chance? This is not a public hearing, but does anybody from the public wish to speak? All right. Commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman. UR 21.03, 101 Valanta Avenue, I move that we approve subject staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve subject staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll put the second on John here. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is another 115211, this is for Seaspire, for about 37,000 linear feet of directional boring. Did I read that right?
Keep going.
And 149,000 linear feet. Okay, so we're talking about miles here.
We are, we are. Is it okay to?
Talk about the evolution of Harbor and.
Metro.
Okay, so we do have an existing company that has had a franchise agreement within the city, and they have some aerial line and, I don't know if it's fiber or copper, but fiber, okay. And then, that was purchased by Harbor Communications, and then, well, there was somebody before Harbor, so, and now Seaspire has purchased the existing equipment, but they're looking at really coming into Fairhope, and I'm not technical in this, but the metro line is going to be your more commercial and your backbone, so that'll be supplying the commercial clients, and then branching off of that, so we've kind of differentiated this 37,000 linear feet, and then 150 approximately thousand linear feet will be residential. Instead of trying to describe all these areas, we just created a map, and if you follow the yellow line coming down Veterans Drive, Section Street, and thankfully, at this time, kind of skirting the edge of the CBD, and looping back to Nichols, over to Ingleside, kind of coming into the medical overlay district, that will be the metro line. And then, there will be multiple phases really along the Bay, Mobile Street, Fruit and Nut District, and those will be board fiber lines. There was kind of questions on how to break this up. For the 115211 review, we wanted just to include it all at once. This is going to be broken up in phases, it will have to be, to be managed, and they've agreed kind of how that's going. This is actually nine building permits, I believe, which will be further broken in and managed in manageable chunks, and our right-of-way inspector will be overseeing this project. This is very similar to some other projects you've seen in the last three months. AT&amp;T's been in a few times, MediaCom's been in a few times, so while we have the locations, the language on, and I'm going to move there, the comments and the conditions are very similar. Well, they're almost the same. It references again our other ordinances just for, to memorialize, if you will, the other requirements we have. There are some, this is the same conditions we saw in those others. I do have one to add, this is just to make sure we're all on the same page, and I think everybody is. When we saw this meeting, I do want to recommend Seaspire, we, they received, we received GIS files, which allowed us to kind of look and see where conflicts are when we had this many linear feet. There were a few areas that are shown on their map where, that if you do a windshield survey, it looks like a public road. It's an asphalt drive, but it's actually private property. They're not going to go on private property without permission, we just want to add that condition, so in addition to the five here, that they will be responsible for clarifying access on private property that is not the city's and is not covered under the franchise agreement. If we can memorialize that one, Chris. You got it? Okay, thank you. The other five are conditions we've seen, you've seen on the other ones, so again, if you want me to read them, I will, but I'm going to give everyone a break and try not to.
Okay. Thank you, Hunter. Any questions for staff at this time?
And Seaspire and the contractor that's doing the work will, are here tonight if y'all have any questions.
Do y'all have anything to add?
So, my name's Clay Branch, I'm the director of OSP deployment, and he covered everything really well, so I think the biggest thing I would take away here is the, we are asking for permits for more than we're going to start. We're not going to perform all this work at once, it would overwhelm the city and your residents, and we don't want to do that, so we will do this in phases that are respectful to the city and then the residents and your utility commission, so that we're not overwhelming the water, or any of the sewer, or any department like that, so, but I thought you presented it really well, so.
Any questions for?
What is a draft door hanger?
So, we bring, when we're going to do construction, a lot of times, residents get really concerned, as you would imagine, because we're going to be in their, in the right-of-way, in their potential, in what they believe to be, you know, it is their yard. So, as we're moving through, we always put something on their door to try to let them know why we're there, what our purpose is, that's really what that is.
All right, I understand. Y'all are one of the few types of businesses that usually get to pretty good reception.
Yes.
It doesn't matter, what's your timeline?
Timeline for what's been proposed could very well be a year. We certainly don't want to do it too fast, like I said, and overwhelm everybody, because it is a very intrusive process, can be visually intrusive, it doesn't have to be intrusive to your life or anything for the residents or the community, but we typically do each phase in about 90 days, so if we've got four or five phases, you can see that could take a year or a little longer than that, so. And it really, once we get to moving through the city and the residential areas, if you guys have a pace that feels like we're going, if you feel like we're going too fast, or doing too much, that's impacting your water department, your utility departments, then we can slow down, but typically, based on what we've got permitted, or trying to get permitted, I'd probably say about a year.
Thank you very much. Anybody from the public have any questions at this time? All right, Hunter?
Hunter, who is our right-of-way construction inspector?
That is John Thomas.
Thompson?
Thomas.
Thomas.
I do want to kind of point, we'll kind of highlight a couple of things there, and John is out there checking, you know, these things, and he's the one that really helped us put some of these conditions, and highlighted the ordinances we have in place. As most of y'all know, the Fruit and Nut is smaller streets, very well-established trees, things like that, and they're 40, a lot of them are 40-foot right-of-ways, so, and then some of this in the staff report does kind of allude to, there's a congestion there in those right-of-ways of utilities, so we haven't seen new utilities go in ground there in a long time. I can tell you the existing folks during Sally, when we had trees down that took some of the aerials, that was one of the first requests, can we go in ground, and, you know, it's kind of decided it's congested there, so we're curious how that gets resolved, but they will be working with John to come up with that solution, and see what we can do there. So, that is one thing. I do want to mention one other, I'm going to get off topic this one for a second, but there is a utility facility that will have to go in line with this, it is proposed on Nichols. What would you call this, is that like a CO or the equipment?
We call it a mechanic sign. It's our, it's where our signal comes from that serves the market.
Okay. So, you know, there's some, there's a facility there with a fence, not huge, we're not talking about like an electric substation, but currently, the way the zoning code reads, and this was a change made about three years ago, that goes to Board of Adjustment. Recently, electric substation went to Board of Adjustment for that approval. I don't like that process personally. I would like to propose those 115211 reviews stay at Planning Commission and get back to that, so we could have included that in this, and have talked to Board of Adjustment about that. So you may see a recommendation to kind of take that out of the zoning like it is, and go back to 115211 reviews, pursue it to state law. You may see that proposal, so we can kind of streamline some of these things and not have, have different meetings, and that not be tied to a zoning, because it's on every zoning case we have, or every zoning district we have. So that, just a couple of points there. We, this will have a, another item going to Board of Adjustment, because that's the way it is today, but we'll look at that amendment.
All right. Any questions for staff? Thank you, Hunter. Chris, you don't have a problem with us doing 115211 for nine building permits? I just assume not seeing them nine more times personally.
No, I'm good with it, as long as the planning commission is agreeable to handle it in that manner, and making it clear it's for all nine.
Okay. And I'll just say one point, when y'all get to Bayview A and B along Mobile Avenue, those right-of-ways aren't consistent there. Some are 40 and some are 60, so people probably won't care anyway unless you, you know, get into a tree or some of their, you know, plants and end up being there, but I know that those right-of-ways there, back and forth, kind of unusually, so that's just, that may have been the area that Hunter was mentioning, but just watch that one area right there. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Hunter clarified, they won't, they're applying for nine building permits, it's only one 115211 review, so.
I move we approve UR 21.04, subject to staff recommendations, including clarification on access to private property.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve subject staff recommendations and the clarification of dealing with the private property. Any further discussion?
And that's an added condition number six?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ZC 21.11. This is a zoning change request from R3 to R4, and just for anybody out there, the way that this works is the zone is a city ordinance, so we don't have the ability as planning and zoning commission to change any kind of zoning, so we will simply make a recommendation to the city council one way or the other, and ultimately, the city council will decide whether or not to change this zoning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is a family member, so I will abstain from being a part of this, but I will sit here and listen, and just one correction before I do that, it's from R4 to R3.
R4 to R3.
Not R3 to R4.
R4 to R3 TH.
Backwards, got it. R4 to R3 TH.
So this is a public hearing to consider the request of Anthony Tac and Christian Combacher to rezone property from R4 low-density multifamily residential to R3 TH high-density single-family townhouse residential. The property is approximately .4 acres and is located at the east terminus of Gaston Avenue, and on the east side of South Section Street at 211 South Section Street. The owner is, the owners are represented by Mr. Craig Dias. Here, we have our zoning map and our aerial. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application, showing the potential proposal for what the applicant intends to do on the lot. You see, we have two additional townhomes, some remodeling of the existing house. The applicant desires to rezone the subject property similar to the adjacent property to the east to allow for townhomes. The applicant also notes the benefit of reduced front setbacks as requested in the R3 TH district. The zoning ordinance requires a 30-foot front setback in R4 district, and a 20-foot front setback is required in the R3 TH. R3 TH is defined as this district is intended to provide areas exclusively for development of townhouses on a high-density basis where no side yards are required. And as you see on the map here, the adjacent zoning districts, you have B1 to the north, you see the R3 TH, that's directly abutting the subject property, and the other abutting properties are single-family residential. The property at the intersection of Oswald and South Section is actually B2. It should be noted that this is not a site plan review, and the potential approval of the rezoning case does not constitute the approval of the site plan submitted with this application. Staff has however reviewed the site plan and has determined that the plan does not currently meet the R3 standards, and would therefore require revisions prior to the issuance of any building permit. An administrative replat would be required to create one lot, as shown on the site plan, it is currently, one of the townhomes is situated on top of a historical lot line, and then additionally, a multiple occupancy project would, approval would be required, because there are three units on one lot, and that process would take into consideration green space and design standards. Based on our review, staff finds that the applicant has taken into consideration the surrounding properties when making the request for R3 TH. This is just the general criteria for what we look at when we consider rezoning applications. Staff's recommendation, we recommend to approve case ZC 21.11 rezoning from R4 low-density multifamily residential to R3 TH high-density single-family townhouse residential district. And that is all I have, unless you have any questions. We also have some more images that the applicant would like to share as well, if there are no questions for me.
Similar, I do. What was it you were saying about the not consistent with R3, just a minute, I didn't understand that.
So, the site plan as submitted, there were some issues in terms of if we were looking at this to permit today, so we just wanted to say that this site plan would not be, it may be tweaked, and that was the comment that was made in terms of this is not a site plan review, but because it was submitted, we did see some things or some issues there. Just right off the top, like I said, it's, the second townhouse is situated on top of a lot line. You have the existing home, it's showing a garage that's encroaching in the rear setback, and there were some other things that were noted to the applicant, so there would be some changes, this would not be what would potentially be approved, but we're not considering the site plan today, just the reason.
So basically, you're just giving us a heads up that if we approve the zoning change, that what they were currently planning on doing doesn't meet what we're, what we would be changing it to?
There would be some, yes, sir, there would be some changes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we did that more as a courtesy to the client, saying, here's your challenges based on the plan you show. We're not approving your site plan, but here's the challenge, if you think you can remedy these things before you come in to permit, that's it, and, you know, one of those specifically, and it may be something that we need to consider. And I will say, I think you'll see the other folks, there's already been an amended site plan to show how they're kind of thinking that through. You know, one of those details there was the R3 TH, we have a few R3 zoning, requires a rear yard of 400 square feet, and it says rear. You know, that's been a conversation with some of the other townhomes we looked at. In the proposed site plan, that's actually being shown on the side, you know, and not the rear, but again, we're not approving the site plan, if it's rear yard, then they can come and do that. You know, we kind of looked at this from a big picture, what is R4, allows a duplex on each lot, I'm not sure that they can make that site plan work to get a duplex on each lot, but that's four units. This is three, and there's.
That was kind of my question, because normally, you think of an R4 as a denser zoning than an R3, so why would R3 allow more units if they're trying to get an extra unit on there? Was kind of what I was wondering about this issue a little.
And this is a hard one for us when we're not looking at a specific site plan. I look at it and say, well, for practically, what I would want to sell in the square footage, you know, really, a single family on each lot's about the limit, but I can't imagine what some people would, you know, potentially propose with R4, and if it comes in, could they squeeze a duplex and make that work? It, from a practical standpoint, I think the way it sits is potentially two, one single-family building on each lot, which R4 does allow, and we even told, you know, the applicant that, and with this zoning, the risk, there, I suppose there's still a risk to the applicant that they still can only get two units if they can't meet those guidelines for building permit, but, you know, we didn't, we didn't see too much of an issue except for that front setback, and that's where we look at adjacent properties, and a lot of those properties there are for, of the R4 front setback, so, yeah, it's a.
And you said this will not trigger a site plan review in the future?
Potentially. You know, when we get, you know, there's a few things, if they're building, it's not mixed-use, so they're not going to build to the height, but impervious surface, the impervious surface is the more likely, but it will trigger an MOP review with three, if they do propose three lots, or three structures on one lot, that will require MOP review, so that, that will have some site plan components there. But really, about the only one that can catch this one on site plan review would be the impervious surface.
Got you there. Hi.
Chris, do we have a quorum with R?
Yeah, five is a quorum.
Okay, perfect. All right.
I could put a bag over my head.
Can't get any slack up here now.
Give it back to them here.
All right. Would anybody wish to make a presentation on behalf of the developer at this time?
Eric, we got your slide right after that, so if you got them, I think, in your order, just hit those errors back and forth. My name's Craig Dias, I am the reason R is abstaining. I appreciate y'all hearing this. Obviously, we're looking to downzone from an R4 to an R3 TH, we've done it before, and as Eric Cortina has pointed out, y'all have made a lot of changes in 18 years since we did that one, which is actually right behind it. The objective's pretty clear, we did clean up this site plan a little bit, as you can see, from the one that was kind of on the initial application, and I think we're pretty close. The one thing that we are going to ask for is that you allow us to put our 400 square feet minimum rear green space area between the buildings and create courtyards out of those, it makes it pretty convenient for access out of kitchens and, and just being able to create a pretty cool space out of it. The ones that we did on the property behind, they turned them into really neat spaces, just with fences, and, basically, little patios there, they're pretty private. Let's see, this is what, you know, we want to keep the house.
Going back to that last one, that's parking in the rear, I mean, of course, this is a zoning, so, I mean, any of this could change, but, I said, I'm sorry, this is a zoning, so any of this could change, but that's parking in the rear?
Those boxes, the short, I mean, the brown ones, you know, the same color as the thing, that is, those are parking, they're carports or whatever.
Right, and then the gray is kind of the road, kind of drive back in there then?
Correct.
Okay.
You got it?
Got it, I'm good.
You know, the house on the left is the one that's there now, you know, our goal was to keep that house, and, you know, we hadn't really decided whether we're going to keep it or sell it, we're going to remodel it. You know, we've got half the budget in to restore that house, it's an old Fairhope house, and way too many of them are being demolished, and we feel like we need to keep that, and we've tried to bleed off of that with the two new design, with the new design, the one new design for two new houses. You know, unless you've got a question, I'll just keep moving. This is the one that's behind it, and you can see the space there between it, it's kind of what we did there. These are the neighborhood, this is all the way around, this is off Oswald, shooting in a vacant lot, this is the Bell South Building that's adjacent to the north. We actually own the little three strip, three-unit strip adjacent to the north, it's 209 South Section, so we own that and this parcel here as well, so it's the B1, this is actually B2, and that's it. Question?
Any questions for the applicant at this time?
That was the question I was going to ask, because the owner on our form says Dr. Combacher and Anthony, but.
My clients have bought it from those guys.
Okay, okay, that's what I was going to ask.
We discussed that recently, and I think next month, you'll even see a little bit different description on the agendas. A lot of times, our applications have property owner and applicant, and we'll be clear on both of those, so the applicant is X representing, but as you know, sometimes at this stage, it's.
No, I saw it so. I saw it on the MLS.
It overlapped, you know, we just had to apply.
It sold on the 30th.
Well, this is a zoning anyway, which goes with the property, it's not like a subdivision. So, all right, thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments or concerns? Yes, sir. And if you don't mind just stating your name and your address for our secretary up here, so she can put you on the record, please, sir.
My name is Levi Reinhardt, I live at 251 South Section Street, I'm the neighbor. I'm the neighbor featured in one of the photos there. I think I have a question about, is it possible? We don't know for sure what these plans are going to be. The plans that have been put forward seem to be not finalized, and, I'm sorry, this is my first city council meeting, so I beg your pardon, thank you. We don't know what the plans are for sure, and I wonder, is there the possibility that they could apply for a permit, or someone, some future owner, apply for a permit that would turn it into one of the items listed here, such as maybe a small school or some other application other than what's being presented?
What we're looking at here is a rezoning. So the pictures actually that Craig showed, and I always say this when we have meetings, and I say, especially when we have newer commissioners, this is not a PUD, this is just a rezoning. So basically, if we approve this rezoning, he will lose all of the rights that he has under R four zoning, which if you read the R four zoning, it has certain setbacks, depths, heights, et cetera, density levels, so forth.
What is R four classified as far as density?
The R stands for residential, and then you have like R one of the largest houses, and then two, you know, a little bit smaller lots, three smaller, so.
The larger the number, the smaller the density.
Correct. So R four is seven units per acre, and then you just, you know, you have to get in the whole ordinance, it's got, you know, how much surface can be impervious, how much, you know, greenery you have to have, you know, setbacks, et cetera. So basically, they would be losing all of their R four rights and gaining all of the R three rights. So, you know, if Craig decided, you know, hey, I don't like this deal, I'm going to sell it, whoever comes in could do something else, or he could change his mind. You know, it's nice when they give you an idea of what, you know, they do, and I would trust that Craig probably would do that, just because he's done that type of thing before, and it, you know, makes sense that he would, you know, that that would be kind of hi, his desire. But again, you know, we make a recommendation to the city council. The city council actually then, you know, decides whether or not to do the rezoning, and then at that point, you know, all bets are off, whatever's legal to do with R four can be done. Or, excuse me, R three TH if it's so approved. Otherwise, he would still have the R four rights that he has already.
Thank you for that explanation.
And we'll, we'll just highlight, R four has a list of uses, or R three TH is probably our most restrictive one. You know, a lot of those have the catchalls that you might have seen there, like a school and things like that. For R three TH is plain, it's townhomes, and the utility we talked about for, we're looking at utilizing that. If that was the only one, there of the homeownership, you know, that's, that's someone being able to have their office in their house, 25% out of public office, so that's the, that's the only uses allowed.
What is the R three TH density per acre?
That was a tough one. It doesn't, we don't have a, a unit per acre on that one. That kind of gets into, it's more form-based, so the section that follows up under those special conditions of that zoning type talks about how long a building can be, but some townhomes, like we've seen some proposals, 150 unit townhomes, it's, in all practical purposes, three units here on one side.
And then this is something that we may or may not see again, depending on how he, you know, chooses ultimately here or anybody else that the property's sold to in the future. I mean, they could build this in 50 years from now, that building would be taken down and it'd still have the, you know, whatever zoning, the zoning is at the time. But based on how he or anybody else would choose to develop this property, you know, will have to do with whether we see it again or not. For instance, if they just decided to put two little small cottages, one on each lot, it wouldn't trigger any kind of, I don't think, any kind of a site plan review or MOP or anything. On the other hand, you know, hitting, if he hits certain impervious surfaces or density levels, then it has to come back for a multi-occupancy or, you know, a site plan review.
So do I understand correctly that it is possible that in the future, the owner could change it not to be a townhouse, but to be what I would say is sort of a semi-commercial, you know, like a school, like a high-traffic type of building?
Not under the R three TH. Under what it currently is, he could.
Under what it currently is, it could happen.
Correct.
And you're talking about changing it to R three. I'm a little confused, because I, I have a printout here that says that underneath this R three zoning change, that, that it would open it up to permits that would allow things like schools.
Are you looking at the plain R three or the R three TH?
May I approach and?
Here, him. He's the best when it comes to all of the details.
And, and R three is confusing. We have an R three patio garden home, a regular R three, and a R three TH.
The TH stands for townhome, by the way.
So if you follow R four down this column, probably should have had my glasses. If you follow R four down the column, you can see all the white and black dots. Basically, black dots here mean it has, it's allowed if they get a permission, or if it's just a black dot, they can do it anyway. And you go over to R three TH, is that it? You can see all the lawful uses there. That means they have to meet the requirements for townhomes, and then nothing else, except for this one. And that's a, you see, everything, every zoning district allows a public utility if they go to Board of Adjustment, but we're looking at changing that.
Can you tell me what is the paper blocking?
Yeah, these are all of the uses. These are the zoning districts here, and these are the list of the uses. So it would have to have either a black solid dot or a white dot or this symbol to be allowed or to be possible, and this is a blank.
So my concern is.
If you don't mind, say it in the microphone if you could just.
So you're looking at R three, not R three TH. This request is to R three TH.
Okay, it's, it's this, this is the paper.
Yeah, somebody printed out R three instead of R three TH. Potentially a public utility, but that's, that's not something that is. That's, we're, if, if, and I'll talk to the commission here, because we did talk about this in the first case. We're looking at changing that back. Any public utility is available on any piece of land within the city, okay? But they have to go through what we call a 115211 review. At some point, we made that, put this here about three years ago, sending it to Board of Adjustment, but this commission is probably the more appropriate to review those cases, just like we did on, on the case here. So, yes, any property can be a public.
And we're, we're talking like if the property were sold to C Spire or to the City of Fairhope or to Alabama Power, and they put a box there, a cell phone tower, or something like that, but all that would have to be approved under 115211, and that's any property anywhere, so it's not really worth contemplating.
Thank you for that explanation.
All right, any further questions, Levi?
Yes. Do I take it that this is where we voice any opposition that we have to the changes?
Sure.
Okay. This is the first time that I've seen the layout or the potential layout, because we haven't actually seen what the real plans are, they're not finalized. And it puts a high-traffic driveway directly on our property line, basically directly next to a bedroom window. And it seems that for all the townhouses, that driveway is going to sweep right across there. I think I have to voice that I, I don't think that that is going to be a quiet zone or a private zone, and having our property right next to that, I would not find that to be enjoyable. I'm trying to say it politely.
Sure.
My family, I'm sorry.
And by the way, we're, we're looking at the zoning here, not a site plan, so.
I understand, but the site plan is being presented as an example of what's going to happen to the property, and it, it prompts me to have to speak up and say that that would not be acceptable. So I understand it's regarding the zoning, but the question is, what are we rezoning it to? What does it mean to be a zone? And if we're talking about turning it into a high-traffic zone, that's where I have the complaint, and we can see an example of it being high-traffic. It's the exact reason that I would want something to be classified in high-traffic, so that I could oppose it. One more thing I'd like to say is that we've owned the property that we've lived at since the 1960s, it's been in the family. So although I agree with, you know, forward movement and forward development, when people come in and they take over a property and then they want to improve it, they're, they're looking to change things, and that's reasonable. But, you know, we like the house the way that it is. We like how quiet and peaceful it is. We like that there's no foot traffic, there's no sidewalk there, and it encourages people not to pass noisily in front of the house, which people do because Fairhope is growing. But the way, changing of this zoning is going to change the way that our property functions. It will provide more walking space, I think, for foot traffic, and it'll encourage more passersby and so on. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to this item? It's your chance, Mike. The mic's there, Mike.
Well, I think everything's pretty much been covered.
My, my concern. Same address.
My big concern, I guess, is that, you know, there's not really a set in stone what they're going to do there. So it's hard to, I mean, they could just change it drastically, but he, he cleared a lot of that up, one of my questions that I had, by explaining that it's pretty much got to be townhouses. And I wonder if they could, as far as zoning, we can't require it. But as far as the driveway, if it could be moved, it would be helpful for us. But as far as zoning change or not, I would like to be a friendly neighbor, but at this point, I am inclined to oppose it.
If they come in with that exact drawing, I think that would trigger a site plan review.
MOP.
Well, MOP, excuse me, multiple occupancy, which after this meeting, I would get Hunter to teach me once, one more time the difference between the two for number, for fifty.
Big general, one is a zoning ordinance, one is a subdivision regulation. But, and forgive me for asking, but are you to the north or to the south?
South.
South, okay. So.
North is the commercial.
Okay.
They own that.
They, you know, that, that side, you do have a non-conforming structure there, and that's being preserved, so it is a little into the setback. But any setback there on the southern side has to be, when you have a driveway, we have a 15-foot minimum setback there. So that is what it is. It actually might not be that in R four. I'd have to check that on that dimensional standard. So that driveway it is, is allowing, I believe we have a three-foot between the property line and the edge of driveway. That's every driveway you see in town. You know, that's, that's most of residential zone. That's what it is, so.
The driveway between the commercial building and the residential historic home is very narrow, so I don't know if it conforms, but.
Yeah, and, and being the new driveway proposed on the southern side is, is, I think, what's in question, and that setback pushes the buildings further away, but, but the driveway can be within three feet of property line, and that's the case if it was R one, R two, R three, you know.
That's, that's a good point.
I was trying to think if we could swap the driveways on the other side, but I just don't think there's any room between the commercial building and the.
You would lose the historic home. I mean, that, that's one of the goals, I think, this, this proposal was trying to save, there's some, there's a shed roof on the southern portion of that building that it would come down off this, but for the most part, saving that side was one of their goals, so it's either, you know, it's kind of a give or take, at, at least as proposed in this site. We, we can certainly see a, you know, a, a building permit that has that building going, but I don't think that's the.
All right.
Is this also the 35-foot height limit and three-story limit?
You can't build three-story for sure. I think it's 30, or I think 30.
So, all right, so you're saying 15 feet from the property line to the edge of the building?
That would be the setback, side setback, not the driveway. The driveway would be within three feet. If it extends to press the front of the building, is that, you might check in that on, I know we've got the, where they accept those, that section.
But again, we're, we're getting real into detail. I mean, because like I.
I thought this was a zoning case.
This is a zoning case, and so you said the zoning, because even if they have this R four, they can still come back with a darn similar plan, and frankly, I, I think they have, I'm surprised they're asking for this zoning, frankly, based on what they're looking at doing.
Yeah, I mean, the driveway can be, I, I, I haven't mentioned that, but it can be where it is, where even if they downzone to R one and had a.
But we're actually going to a more restrictive zoning on this, to be honest.
And all that could be there is townhouse.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I'm not going to oppose that.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, anybody else wish to speak to this item? ZC twenty-one eleven, 211 North Section Street. That's kind of interesting, ZC two-one-one is 211 section, when did that happen?
It's been confusing. And the area.
Right. All right. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, turn the meeting over to commissioners. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve Z seventy, ZC twenty-one eleven with staff's recommendations.
Motion to make a recommendation.
Yes.
I got a motion to make a recommendation to approve the rezoning to R three TH. And I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously.
Upstein.
With whoa, excuse me. Five, five ayes and one abstention, please. Alec?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, if I am correct, is Summer Lane Partners LLC final plat approval for Summer Lane, a 15-lot subdivision. Property is at the terminus of Southern Lane on the west side of Section Street.
Thank you, Chairman. Evening, Commissioners. Mike Jeffries with City of Fairhope. This is a request of Summer Lane Partners LLC. Dewberry is the authorized agent and engineer of record for this. This is a final plat approval. We did see the preliminary plat was approved February third of 2020, and there is currently zoned a PUD, which also had a site plan that went along with it, that the preliminary plat was approved on, and we're approving the final plat after all the infrastructure has been put in and been verified. As said, is close to the corner of Pecan and South Section Street. On your screen, you can see on your left the zoning, and on the right, the aerial. The aerial will now, if you've driven by, will look a little bit different than that. Up on your screen is the as-built plat that has been constructed. You'll see there's a total of 15 lots on approximately 5.2 acres. Stormwater comments, the stormwater system has been built and designed and is functioning as per design. Per, per a letter from the engineer of record, water and sewer did their inspections. The water system, only remaining deficiencies is installing some rain guards. They have been ordered already and made, to my knowledge, have already been installed since the time that the staff report was written, and requiring a final cleaning of some of the sewer inverts, and you'll see that as a condition of approval at the end of this. Just a few general comments, there are some brick pavers that are inside of what will become the city's right-of-way. That will be a responsibility of the homeowner association to maintain, and that will be reflected in the resolution of acceptance that will ultimately be presented to council when taken over the right-of-way and improvements. There's a 16-foot alley, as you can see on the screen, that is on the rear of all the lots. That is to remain private, and is for the use of the land, landowners of those lots and for access to the property. The utility easement goes behind there where their gas and. The utility easement goes behind there where their gas and electrical is back there. But other than that, the trash collection will be from the public rights-a-ways. And a final note is that the final plat must be recorded within sixty days after the date of final approval. And I asked the engineer tonight if they see any reason that the rain guards that were ordered, if they are on back order or they need additional time to request an extension of that sixty days now, if they know approximate date that that will be done and can be inspected by our water and sewer department. Some follow-up activities is if approved and signed in the final plat, once it's recorded, the City of Fairhope will need a copy of that along with a copy of the recorded O and M agreement. That goes along with our maintenance and guarantee agreement that's executed by the developer. It will be signed by the mayor and that is to ensure our two-years maintenance of the right-of-way and the infrastructure that's been put in. You'll see there are now eight conditions of approval. Majority of these comments are reflected as notes on the plat to be added before it's signed. One and two, we've already talked about the rain guards being installed and the sewer inverts being cleaned. Revised note number two to also reflect the utility easements. We want to include the PUD ordinance number, the planned unit development number to the site data table. We found that in future research of going back on these, it's easier to look up that if it's on the plat. Add a general note referring to the decorative pavers. There's missing a certificate block for the gas, needs to be added. The last item here, number seven, second to last, is that we approved the subdivision name change on the plat to be the cottages at Summer Lane rather than just Summer Lane subdivision. And eight is just memorializing completing those above follow-up activities. On behalf of staff, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. We have Casey Hill with Dewberry here tonight on behalf of the engineer and Sheriff Stovall on behalf of the owner.
All right.
Your recommendation six, seven, eight are not on our.
They were not. These were added after the staff report was completed. Notice that the certificate block was moved and I would request to re, to change the name on what the plat showed. The cottage at Summer Lane came in the last few days.
I don't know.
Mike, I hate to do this, but I think we need to add a ninth one and we're gonna talk about this in old new business. But I think we need a, a signature block and I won't get into details, but Baldwin County E91 has requested a signature block on the plats so that they can make sure street names and addressing are correct and getting in the system. And we, we, we're gonna, we've got that in old new business. I think they will be appropriate here as well.
I believe there already is one.
Okay. Thanks. We've, we've got a request to have one, so we're stumbling through that one, so thank you.
But if not, we'll be sure that that E91 signature block is added as well.
Let's not leave this screen on if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, I will.
All right. Anybody wish to speak on behalf of the developer? I mean, you don't have to. I know that you're here. I'll open the public hearing and see if we have any questions. Any questions for the developer? All right. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? I will close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case number SD two-one-point-three-eight, summer, um, am I, am I calling it cottages at Summer Lane? Only after I, only after we approve it?
Only after you approve it.
Summer Lane PUD. I move that we approve subject staff recommendations with items one through eight? Nine?
One through eight, they said now is already done.
Okay, one through eight.
All right. I have them. Motion and a second to approve subject to staff recommendations, one through eight, as seen on the screen. Ally, you have those in your records, one through eight. Okay.
And just. We're approving final plat, not the PUD.
Final plat, excuse me.
And any, any further discussion? In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving down to old slash new business.
The Wimmill Professional Parts Subdivision, you know, with, for various reasons, I hope you just kind of trust us on this one with materials and COVID and all kind of other things, there was a request for a thirty-day extension to get the plat signed. We'd like to recommend approval of that request. That would be a. Okay. The, so that, that request would have to be voted on by the commission. It, it kind of brings into a bigger question. Is there any, we, we just saw Summer Lane. They have now sixty days to fix these conditions and record the plat. Is there any opposition to extending that time to ninety or one-hundred-and-twenty days?
I think we need some kind of parameters on a hardship of what, I mean, otherwise we're getting into, we give everybody a, a pass.
And that's kind of what we're, that's the, so two, two options on the table. We do recommend the thirty-day extension here. There's legitimate things and, you know, as, as I said, materials, one thing, but COVID affects people these days. And there, there's, I think, a legitimate request here. But we are seeing more and more of these requests with materials and people working, you know, conditions and things like that. If it would resolve a lot of these things, is there, sixty days is somewhat arbitrary. You know, you look, we've looked around at other places and, you know, it, some are ninety days, some are one-hundred-and-twenty days. So just a, just a question.
If I may. Unfortunately, I understand completely what you're saying, but the subregs specifically say sixty days after final approval. And the commission may, on finding of good cause, extend that sixty-day period specifically tasking the commission. So I don't think you, without changing the subregs, I don't know that we can change that.
And let me, let me be clear, cause I am kind of blending two things. The request on the table is for one particular project to extend for thirty days. Would I like to ask y'all to vote on that one?
All right. Let's still on that first. And let's see if there's a good reason for them to do that. All right. Any commissioners have an issue with extending this for another thirty days? All right, if not, all accept a motion.
I move we extend the director of the record's final plat for SD twenty-one-point-two-nine by thirty minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
You know, the one thing, the one thing to consider going forward, and because it got to be such a massive problem in two thousand and eight, nine, ten, and eleven, when things were going crazy, kind of like they're going, have been going lately, you start seeing a lot of this if, if, if the, if the projected downturn starts. So my, my issue has to do with when and if it does start, that we have to see these every thirty days instead of giving them the time to be able to. So something, something to consider to make.
What's your thought on this, Chris?
I mean, it's vague in terms of given what good cause is.
I'll look as far as I can set it up to ninety so we don't.
And then that was my proposal.
If we, if we would change the subregs, I don't have a problem with that at all. I mean, I, I think that would be consistent. We just need to make sure the procedure is set forth in the subregs.
I don't want to waste the time writing that proposal.
I, I want to know.
Up to ninety or?
I want to know typically, how long it, does it typically take? And why is it just now because of materials and, and a pandemic? Or what is the general consensus of how long it typically takes to get a, a plat revised?
You know, they're, they're, it, it's somewhat dependent on the applicant, their engineers. But then there's also outside sources. So the signature blocks on the plat have to be cycled through Baldwin County engineer, now nine-one-one. So they're adding and those take time, in a couple of weeks, surveyors have to get.
They've already done everything and everything's completed. We're just simply waiting on the extensions on these.
Yes.
And more often now, more and more often, we're getting situations where they're not getting it in time.
This one doesn't really, given that there's one materials issue on this one, I think the rain guards for the sewer manholes, you know, there was some delay getting that in. So we think that's gonna happen before that sixty days and then give them a few weeks to get the signatures in recorded. But, you know, if there's a delay getting those in.
Well, it's the issue that we're approving stuff prior to it being done.
Correct.
I mean, should we just quit? I mean, should we just start telling people, hey, you know, don't submit for final approval unless it's done? Cause I sometimes have an issue when, you know, Mike especially, you know, gets up there. Doesn't matter me, you know, when Samir or somebody else does, but when Mike gets up there and says, you know, final approval and, you know, subject to, well, just like on this last one right here, you know, manhole this, 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 and this. I mean, should we just not tell them, look, get everything done? And then come back and when we get this, it's a, you know, it says, subject to nothing. I mean, it's done. I mean, why are we coming thirty days early when then we're not even saving them time on the back end that by the time they get the stuff done and they're going to get the signatures, I mean, even with everybody they gotta go get the signatures to, sounds to me like it's not getting the signatures that's taking sixty days. That shouldn't take sixty days.
It can't.
It's going to get in the manhole cover or, and I, by the way, I have no problem moving it to ninety. But I'm just changing the subject a little bit, kind of, I'm pretending like I'm Art Dias right now. And I'm saying.
That's dangerous.
And I'm saying, why don't we, you know, just require that when they come in for final plat approval, that it's all done?
I agree.
And I hope y'all seen a movement in that direction. We, we have, you know.
It's improved.
We've, we've cut down a lot of conditions. And I think, I, I'll be, I mean, there, there's some, you know, we're the bad guys with the development side, always delay things. And, and I think this is a manageable list. Most of it's just some quick amendments to a plat. And one was held up on getting some materials in. But there's a legitimate argument for that. And, you know, we'll hear about it.
I trust the staff and I don't have an issue if it's seventy-two this or that. You know, this is how we've done it for the twenty-plus years I've been on here. And, you know, it's not a big deal and, and, you know, typically it always gets done. But I'm just saying, I mean, would it help y'all to just tell the developers, look, don't even come unless it's done?
We, we have done that. You would have seen this a month ago with more conditions of approval, had we not. And I will take, some of the conditions that were on this were notes that need to be added to the plat that I should have had them rectified a month ago when they first came to it and I reviewed the plat. So other than the two items, the clean.
And some of the notes I understand when you're saying like, like, like the, the bricks, subject to the, you know, pavers being, you know, responsible, not a responsibility to the city, but being a responsibility to the owners association. I mean, I get those notes, but I'm just saying, when, you know, you get some of these, subject to the trees being planted and subject to, you know, it's just kind of like, wait a minute now.
Well, and some, you know, and it's so different everywhere and we can, you know, you can kind of do whatever you, you know, some places this final plat process is administrative only. And you don't have these recording issues. It is, you get everything done and then you can go record.
I don't have a problem with that either, frankly. I really don't.
I mean, that's.
I mean, I drive out, I didn't drive by this one today. Normally I drive through them and just look around and, you know, sometimes I'm surprised cause the trees aren't in there yet, but, but.
That's when, Art, does that sound familiar? Didn't y'all do that at the county? Y'all didn't look at review final plats? That was administrative review. I mean, that's something that, that could be done. But again, would take amendments. And I'll be honest, that, that's gonna take a little bit more rewriting than changing the number sixty to ninety. So not something that we're gonna be able to accomplish real quick, but.
I just want the review to be thorough. I don't want y'all so overloaded that you have to, everybody has to skimp to hurry up to jump through hoops. I'd rather it be done correctly and the first time around.
On, on something like the extension we're seeing today, you know, that, that's, it's kind of weird things to talk about. But when you have, you know, medical, you know, COVID-related, I mean, we, our staff was out for a while. You know, that happens to people. And if they can't get some stuff done, there's a potential they could have crammed and got this in. We actually recommended, hey, we're busy too. We can't drop everything and do this or let's ask for thirty days and.
There's always something written in with hurricanes and world disasters. I mean, there's gotta be some parameters that you have a, a backup. And that's what I meant when you write in a, a hard case scenario, that, a hardship, that there's things that fall into that.
Also, be aware that the extensions on final plats, the developers, they don't want that. The longer it takes to get that final plat, means longer before those lots are created, they can start selling lots and building homes. They, if they can get it done and have it ready for you to sign tonight, they'd be having to walk out there tonight.
And some people do that. What was River, River Horse or? And there are. With the city I worked for in the past, they actually brought the mylars to these meetings and planning commission chair signed it right then and everything had to be done.
They done, they done it that way in the county. You sat there for however long after the meeting and signed plats.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I tell you, I think what advantage, going back a little bit about the final plat approvals coming to P and Z is, you know, Chris, you know, kind of hears it, it goes by Chris and a few more ears hear it. If there's some unusual condition or something where Chris says, ah, wait a minute, Mike, just a minute, man, maybe we don't want to require this. Or maybe, maybe we have to accept the steps, you know, the stones, cause they're on, you know. I think it does.
It does.
Take a little bit of the burden and, you know, you have an attorney here and it goes by one more time, but.
And there's a public hearing in case somebody says, hey, this was agreed upon and not done. And, you know, we're valuable as well. We could have missed something. So I, I, I think you're right on that.
Okay.
So ninety days, any, any issue with that? I'll kind of look at each of you and state, so you don't have to.
Do you have to advertise that?
Yes.
We do?
Yes. Yeah. A subdivision regulation would have committed. Okay. Couple of other things. Y'all all got an email about CAPSO training. I think you, most of you replied. If, if not, please let Ally know. We were, we're gonna try to get that in before the end of the year.
Are you inviting anybody else to that?
Board of adjustment members, staff, planning commission, and a couple of others.
Just in the city?
Yeah. So you've done CAPSO before, right? You remember how you used to do it and you kind of get one class here, one class here? Well, they haven't had a, held a class in, over almost two years.
Yeah, I bet.
This will be the first class they hold on site of beg them. Can y'all just come here? What, what do it take? And once we get that determined, and then one else, I think Chris mentioned, you know, coming in on that one, you know, and Eric Cortinas has. We haven't budgeted for that. We can, we can probably make it happen, but once we get those numbers, then we can kind of open it up and like we used to and say, all right, I'll reach, reach out to the planning group in Baldwin County, you know, we got six open seats if y'all want to come. But it's a, it's a head count, it's per person cost, not like they used to do it where you paid for one class and then.
Yeah.
So little different than where we're familiar with historically, but it will be a one day and it's done. There's a take-home before the class that, that paperwork will get to us.
When will you decide, when we all decide today? I mean, the earlier we could know the better.
Soon as we get, Ally, do you have a head count on how many's replied?
That was done by, you were supposed to reply by, with an exception. I, I have no exceptions for these.
Okay. And Ally's been handling that. The, so did we have a date to, we're gonna make a decision by?
It's a little mixed between dates right now between everybody. There isn't a certain date that works best so far. And some people haven't replied yet either, so.
I think at some point, we're just gonna have to pick one.
Yeah. We gotta go the best route, you know, and where, where can we get the most?
And FYI, everybody, there are two buttons on your, on your emails. One is reply to all and one is just reply, which means it just goes to Ally. I typically just hit the reply, FYI, but. Unless one of the dates, you know, I'm gonna be like at, at, you know, Bermuda. And then I'm gonna type and reply to all.
You're a brag.
I'm gonna miss the twenty-eight, cause I'm gonna be a Bermuda baby.
Humble brag. So we'll, we'll get that out. We'll take a look tomorrow and see when we can make that call and get that date. Give you as much time as possible. Considering another date to be keep in mind, comp plan update. Think most of you've got the email about the meeting on September twenty-second. That's a public meeting.
What's the date?
September twenty-second. The evening meeting is the first public meeting for the comp plan. The team that we've hired, the engineering team is in Mobile, but a lot of the other folks are from out of town, Nashville. The economist is, you know, they're, they're kind of spread out. They will be here for a three-day window, the twenty-first to the twenty-third. We're gonna send a, a calendar, or hopefully tomorrow we'll finalize that. And kind of the way we're looking at that team, there will be a steering committee. We'll meet on Tuesday and then have some focus groups. I believe we've tentatively scheduled the planning commission and board of adjustment together on Wednesday during the day and have kind of a working lunch with that team, get, kind of get to know them, and then have a meeting that night. Love for everyone to be there.
What date is that? What date?
That will be the twenty-second as well. So we've kind of got that window blocked out.
Are you gonna send out something?
We're gonna send. We're gonna send, hopefully that'll all come out tomorrow, eleven-thirty to one-thirty working lunch.